Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening in your presence as we conduct our city business. We ask for wisdom and guidance as we do so. Lord, we also pray for a hedge of protection over our citizens, our officers, our firefighters, and all of our city employees. In Jesus' sweet, holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Call to order, the meeting of February 16th, 2023. Jim, would you lead us on the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vicki, will you call? Roll.
Here.
Lane Tubbs?
Here.
Melissa Choat? Jim Ley? Louis Short?
Here.
Jim Adams?
Here.
Ally Sugg? Andy Eklund? Attorney Prince? Here. Press. Let the record show we have a quorum. Before we get started in our regular business, I would like to invite Chief Hale and the sheriff up to the front.
My wife said, "Don't get emotional." And when I was about to walk through the doors here, Sergeant Gracie said, "Try to get them to understand." And those are a couple of hard things because Amy thought I got emotional the last time when I was briefing y'all in September. But some of you may not have been on the council at that time, and I would like to give you a brief synopsis of what happened on August 6th, 2022. Shortly after 7:00 AM, Deputy McLean was following up on a trespass incident in the county. The individual involved was at the residence in the city limits, and Sergeant Gracie went to assist. Deputy McLean believed the individual was under the influence of something and asked multiple times if the individual would take a sobriety test. The individual refused, and it was decided the individual should be taken into custody. The suspect became combative at that point, and while struggling with both officers, he was able to obtain a box cutter and cut Deputy McLean across the chest above his body armor, slicing through his clothing and flesh from collarbone to collarbone, and also cutting down the arm, causing severe bleeding and damage in both places. Sergeant Gracie was cutting the neck. Sergeant Gracie began firing at the suspect as he ran with Deputy McLean engaging as well. The suspect was struck with multiple rounds, with one of the rounds striking the lower back, paralyzing him. The suspect was handcuffed, and both officers were relieved by other responding officers. Retired Chief of Police David Smith had stopped in the road and assisted both the officers, checking their wounds and trying to stop the bleeding. In spite of their wounds, when medical units arrived, the officers directed assistance to the suspect. We're proud to recognize both these law enforcement officers tonight with a words for valor from the Hebrew Springs Police Department and the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office. Due to their actions on that day, the citizens of Hebrew Springs were protected from an individual that had no regard for human life and is currently charged with two counts of attempted murder of police officers. Sergeant Gracie, Deputy McLean. For your actions on that day, Deputy McLean, this award of valor. I appreciate everything you did.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things to hand out as well, and I appreciate y'all giving us
the opportunity to do this in front of y'all tonight. I know that both Nathan and Chris believe in their heart of hearts that they were just doing their job that night, and that was what was, or that morning, and that's what was expected of them. But I know that for the folks that were not there, there is some inherent guilt for not being there, right? That they weren't able to be there to help. And so, these awards are a way for us to say thank you for everything that you guys have done. So... Chris, this is a commendation from us for our Medal of Valor, and we appreciate everything that you have done. Appreciate everything you did for Nathan that day.
Thank you, sir.
And Nathan, this is the same thing. This is our Medal of Valor. We've got a pin for you. Your pin's coming from him. And then along with those two things, I reached out to John Payton, who was our representative, one of our two representatives, now one of our senators, and asked if he could get recognition for you guys from our House of Representatives before he left that office. And so, this is a certificate of recognition from our Arkansas House of Representatives as well. Also have a joint thank you for David, which we'll present at a later time for stopping and intervening where he didn't have to. Thank y'all again.
Thank you, Sheriff and Chief Hale, and Sergeant Gracie, and Deputy McLean. Welcome.
Must have been the coaching.
Okay, let's get to business. Need a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the January 19th, 2023 City Council Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki? All right. JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Staying.
Yes.
Jim Ley? Yes. Motion carried. Next, a motion to waive the reading of the minutes approved at the January 24th, 2023 City Council Meeting, plus excerpts. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki? Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes. I don't think I need to. That's good. Motion carried. Next, approval of the payments journals dated January 1st to January 31st, 2023.
Make a motion to accept.
Second. Any discussion? Do you have a question?
Do we need to have any noting about?
It probably wouldn't hurt, right? That treasurer's a little bit behind because of the change of positions and organizing things. Not all the receipts got entered, what I noticed, in particular in sanitation, so it may not be fully, fully up to the end of the month like it normally would be. But I talked to Zeke, and he said he would presume it'd wash out next month.
So we need to approve it as presented?
As presented, yeah. We can do that. Ms. Vicki? Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approval of street fund financial statement, sanitation fund, general fund financial statement, community center O and M, and miscellaneous funds dated January 31st, 2023, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have, I guess, one question. I noticed that trash was a lot. Because is that where the trash was? I noticed a lot of them were still at like 2183 for businesses, and aren't they all supposed to be at 25 now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, do we know why we would have billed them less?
I do not.
Yeah. Did y'all notice that?
We did not. But we need to make sure that we get it caught up.
Are we behind a month?
It's always a month behind.
Okay.
Yeah, but we started paying in January.
We started in December. But that's why, that's why I'm saying that, because we started in December, so in January, it should have been $25.
Correct.
Yeah. But it was still showing. Everybody, everybody was supposed to be levelized that just had the, like, the three trashcans or something. I saw a bunch of different ones. 2183 was like the main one I saw, but nobody was at 25 I saw. I saw some at 20, I saw some at 2183. Like, it was all across the board.
Well, they will be at 25 next month.
Okay. Well, I mean, obviously, too, we're basing everything on that revenue that we're bringing in.
Right.
So that just means that I'm sure it was billed that way in January and February now.
Shouldn't be for February. February should be $25. Yeah, for sure.
To pay in March. So we still missed, yes, January, February. We missed December and January.
Yeah.
Because February would be.
Well, I didn't know they billed at the beginning of the month for February, so it might be.
March's payment will be for now, so they need.
Yeah. I just, yeah, that needs to be.
Water Department handled that for us.
For residential, not for commercial.
This is for commercial. Didn't we go to 25 on commercial, too?
Yes, and it was, yes, it was.
Yeah, so.
So the commercial list, was that what we already had? Or did we?
The businesses?
Make a new business list?
We did do an audit, and there are some new businesses.
Yeah, we just need to make sure we're, that we went up to that.
Right.
25.
Okay, so I had some people come by and asking about that. And my explanation then was get a dumpster and move it to a call as needed.
Right.
As opposed to having three in one. Is that a right recommendation?
Like, three businesses in one?
Yes.
Yes. Or five businesses in one?
Yeah.
I would assume it'd be the same, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so is that what we...
As they...
So we just did an audit, basically, is what it happened. Because I couldn't answer the question. Now it came up.
Yes.
So we'll rent the dumpster, then pay the dumpster?
Yes. So there was a list of businesses that the police department has for keyholder information, and a list from the water department. So we just compared.
Perfect.
Does that help?
Yes, I just didn't, I didn't answer the question.
Right. Okay. Ms. Vicki? Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Do you guys have any questions for our supervisors for their reports?
I do. Couple questions for Josh Parks and Rec. First of all, I want to say thank you for the breakdown of the financials. That was really good to see that. But concession stands for baseball, if we know what we're doing with that. And then I, how will that work? Because I saw that the Boy Scouts are gonna do the concession stands for the high school games. How, how will that work?
Yeah, so right now, we're obviously late to the party, if you will, to get that going. So we've had the Boy Scouts lucky enough for them to come in. The reality is working with Zeke, and the history from my understanding, we actually do not know how much money we actually pulled in from the concession stand. So the long-term goal is for us to find a way for us to take that over. However, the Boys and Girls Club will take over for the high school games this year. There's only three dates that both high school and rec league play. So we're in the process right now of finding someone for the rec league, and the Boy Scouts will just run those three days that are concurrent with the high school game. So that's something that here in the next, hopefully, week or so, we'll be putting out to a bid for those recreation games. We are then going to change that contract currently. I believe it was 10,000?
10,000.
My experience, and I was with Jacksonville when we did the same thing, when I talked with Brian, we kind of are a tight-knit community with Parks Recreation, so I can even ask people nationally. And usually, it's just a percentage. This is the only place I've actually heard that we actually ask for $10,000 upfront. I think a lot of people probably can't put that money upfront. And if we say, "Hey, we want to be able to audit the books anytime we want to. We want a 12% to 15% of your take," and that's what we're going to do with the recreation league. The Boy Scouts at this time, because we're blessed in a way to have them come in and help us, we just want them to kind of audit the books so we can see exactly what we're missing out on. So in the future, I can present that to the council and say, "Hey, we might need extra seasonal employees," or something of that nature, "because we can make this much amount for that concession stand." So that's kind of where we're at. Like I said, it's one of those things that I noticed, you know, the first week or two I was here, and those contracts probably should have been done down back in December. But the high school season actually starts Tuesday, so we had to move pretty quickly, and that's why we developed that relationship with the Boys and Girls. I'm sorry.
Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts, yeah.
Now, if they're doing that as a fundraiser, right, for them?
So they are. So they're actually, we obviously have our contract with the drinks, so we are purchasing the drinks. We're then going to sell them to the Boy Scouts at that same price.
Right.
And then they are working their contract out with how they're doing food. I talked to Stephen Wagner today, and I get with you still, by the way, but they're ready to go. They're set for Tuesday to start the baseball and softball high school.
And maybe, I don't know, to help alleviate having to hire more people. Do you think there's any other organizations around that we want to?
Well, we reached out quite a bit, and I think it's a lot of work. It's, you know, it's a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays that we have tournaments, sometimes Sundays. There's usually a staff of five. You have two people at each concession stand, plus one person cooking. Depending on games, they could run late. So I mean, it is kind of a, you know, a big project. It's not just like some kind of pretty easy to do. The Panther Club is someone I've reached out to. Also, Tim with the athletic director. And we might take on a school project next year. He would, he would want to do that. However, I already offered it to the Boy Scouts by the time he had gotten back to me. So I think there might be in the future a relationship there with the school, whether it be the Booster Club, whether it be a school project, whether it be 4-H Club, something of that nature, that we can benefit with the community and get them involved.
I think at least the basketball concession stand, like, ban volunteers. They get, you know, some of that, and then I guess teams throughout the year.
And that's what, the first, my first contact was with Coach Bridges, the baseball team. Same thing with softball, to see if they would want to take that on. That could be a project. They could raise money and maybe do a spring great baseball trip, you know, tournament type thing. It's just something, talking with Tim, that they already have a lot on their plate.
Right.
And trying to find parents whose kids are not watching, or kids are not currently playing, you know, it's difficult for them. So, long-term, there needs to be a better solution. I admit that. But, you know, but like I said, we came in late to it, and we needed to get it going as quickly as possible to find someone to make sure we had it.
I know most of the schools that we go to, or the towns that we go to, it's, it is city-run. So, and maybe we just need to go back to that once we kind of.
There's definitely some money in it, for sure. We just don't know how much. Like I said, apparently, there's been history. There might have been some issues in the past. And so, we're just not sure how much money is there. But I would like to have this year to see what's there, then that way I can present to the council and say, "Hey, we have this much money that's on the table, you know, potentially, so let's find a way to make this work, where we can run it." So long-term, yes, I would like us to run it.
The only thing, I don't know if we could put this in the thing where it's just not like outrageously priced either. You know, like, where whoever is running it is charging $5 a Coke or something. Just because we do hear about that.
Absolutely.
When we're at the ballpark, and we're like, "This is the most expensive, you know, concession stand that we go to." So I don't know if whoever we work it out with, that there's, you know, that they're just not.
I agree. It should be affordable. It should be, you know, fun. Obviously, that's an environment that we want our community to be involved in. We shouldn't price them out. So, like I said, this year is just kind of a wash in the sense that we're just trying to figure out what we have, what opportunity is there.
Yeah.
And then hopefully moving forward that, you know, we'll have some.
Basketball, if we could have a basketball, I think that would be great, too.
Absolutely. I agree. I agree. 100%.
So, thank you.
No problem.
Thanks, Josh. Anybody else? Okay, we've got some unfinished business. Grocery total property maintenance invoice number 55. What would you guys like to do on this invoice?
Is this the, an additional one, or is this just the normal?
It is, the additional.
So we basically prepaid?
No, we did prepaid. We prepaid paid January.
February.
I mean, yeah, February.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they've been paid January and February.
Correct.
Right.
Yes, this was the additional that they had asked for, for December.
My, my thoughts are, I hate it for them, but they, the bid was to go out and run the city and see what you thought you could afford to do. They did that, or they didn't do that, rather. I just don't think that's something we need there. I hate it for them, but in my opinion, we shouldn't have to be responsible for that.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just saying, if we're staying with the changes we're going to make, and potentially, I mean, I know that's totally separate, but with the changes that we're going to make with the ordinance, and then looking at redoing that thing. Who else? I mean, are we going to get more bids?
Well, I think, kind of, just side along to that, that kind of the same way. Like, I'm, I agree. Louis, it's, you know, I don't, I don't like that they're having to, you know, I hate that for them, basically. But to automatically, you know, that was the reason we had a bidding process. They essentially doubled their bid, and, and, you know, I don't, I don't know that it would be, I would feel all that great about just doubling the price of that month, or an additional month, or a future month, without doing a rebid process, you know? Because who's to say now that with that precedent set, that they're not going to come back two months from now and say, "We're still behind," and all that other stuff. And I, I want to be fair to them, and I want to be fair to anybody else who would have been willing to bid and do all that other stuff, maybe had closer numbers. I think it's just, if they want to, if their pricing isn't right, and they want out, and they want to rebid it, we should rebid it with, open it back up again.
So if we do that, and they are the only bidder, well, their bid would surely be accurate at that point.
Well, and we have to look at it. I mean, when we, when we were discussing this, there's only so much money that we have.
That's right.
So it can't come in, it, you know.
It'd be outrageous.
It can't be an outrageous amount, because we can't afford that. So we only have what we can afford. So there might be the instance where we have to take it back, and Public Works is gonna, we'll have to figure out a plan that way.
So what happened with that new state? What was the number?
28,000. Didn't they send an email?
The burn, no, the burn. You're talking about the burn?
Yeah, yeah.
Bill?
Yeah.
The burn bill?
Did that go to the House yet?
I think it did, but I don't think any of those bills are going to be in effect until January 24.
So it didn't have the emergency?
Right.
So we don't even know if it passed yet?
We may have to develop.
I think it passed, but I emailed Municipal League to get some more clarification, and I had not heard back.
The other thing we might have to do is develop an interim plan where we can service everybody. You know, we have set times where we come and pick up each neighborhood as a city and dispose of it until we can get through to the more normal, if the thing passes, or if bids don't come in in line with what we can afford to the taxpayers without jacking up the price even further. And so I think, you know, that.
Okay, so the certified waste area, or the certified center to get rid of it, I'm assuming that everyone's thinking Jarvis is going to be that certified area.
Yeah, he's putting in a burn carton.
June, July, August.
Is it that far out?
Yeah.
He wants to have a setback, then?
Well, he's, the motor, his electric motor hasn't.
Oh, hasn't come in?
Hasn't come in yet. He can't finish everything until that's done. So, I mean, it's, I think...
But the other thing is we can't.
Even if it's, even if it's them, they don't know what their waste costs are going to be.
Yeah, because Jarvis doesn't know yet, because it's going to depend on how fast it burns.
Right. So I think we're in a limbo period, no matter what's going on, whether...
Without doubt. Maybe we just do another rebid and do it for a year, and see what we're all just shakes out, too.
Yeah.
I mean, we may have to do that as well. So I don't know that we have any specific answer right now, other than if they keep coming back asking for more and more money.
So where does that leave us with, with John Pat's company?
We'd have to rebid.
Could he bid?
I feel like that's a conflict.
A conflict.
Why wasn't it before?
You weren't a council member. You weren't a council member.
Yeah, but I would be. You know what I'm saying? Would I have had to say, "Oh, I can't be a council member now," if I would have gotten the contract?
He actually technically was, but he wasn't sworn in yet. You know, like, he won the election by the time, and then we, we voted for the company after the election, because we voted for them in November.
Can we back up just a little bit?
So I just, I don't know. I think that's something that, I don't know what's considered a conflict of interest here, and I don't know if like that's a municipal league question or, or what.
Back to your idea about the one-year thing. It's, it would have to be a company that already had, you know, a full slate of equipment.
Sure.
Local land. A one-year commitment is probably not reality for, for most companies. They couldn't, they wouldn't be able to weather not getting a three, three or four, five-year contract, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But, yes, I know that's just an idea that you threw out.
Yeah, it was just a thought.
Now, if we went ahead and said, "We're going to throw out a rebid," we still have to get that 72 day, or?
120 days.
120 days.
Yeah, and that's, that's on here.
I think it's 60 days if they're in a breach of contract, which they are, because they haven't, they're not picking up once a month like they're supposed to. So, they're not doing, they're not fulfilling their contract. I'm getting multiple calls, even more now than I was. And so, it's just kind of crazy to me that we're like, I'm like, "Yes, we're paying somebody to go pick it up." And they're like, "Well, it's not getting picked up." And so, so they are in.
I'll check on that. I don't remember the 60 days for breach of contract, but I will check on that.
Well, I think it's in 60 days, and they have 60 days to fix the issue, you know, to fix their problem.
At any, and I believe you when you say that, it'd still be 120 days, whether it's for breach of contract or just a termination without cause.
Yeah.
Which brings us back to the conversation of if they're aware...
Which brings us back to the conversation of if they're aware that we need to terminate the contract, they would probably mutually agree to, because they're not going to want. I would tuck tail and run in a hurry if I knew I couldn't cover my expenses. I would beg you guys to let me out. There would be, you know, so, um, I, I don't, I don't know that that's, I don't, are they represented tonight?
No, they're not.
Okay. Uh, it, um, that discussion may need to happen with them. Are they aware that we're having this meeting tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Are they upset?
They are aware that we are not happy with the services, and, of course, they're not happy with, with it either.
Sure.
I'm, I'm gonna assume that they would be happy to, to redid.
Yeah. So, are, are we legally, are we able to have a conversation with them, saying?
Oh, absolutely.
If we shake hands apart as friends, you know, so to speak?
Absolutely.
So, if we mutually bow out together?
Yes, we could terminate effective immediately.
Which.
But if we only had two companies that bid, and one of them can't bid now, they're, well.
Well, and.
I, I'll speak to the conflict. So, I, I don't think it, um, I think that we could waive the conflict with, if, if, uh, Mr. Hodges' company was a successful, put in a bid, and was a successful bidder, uh, we could waive the conflict the same as we do with any other city employee council issue. There's not another contract that is, um, that any of our council members have, or city employees have with the city, that would be of that magnitude. Um, I would caution you that, you know, perhaps you, you might be subjecting yourself to a fair amount of public scrutiny, uh, because of the, the cost of the contract.
Anonymous bids and anonymous bid opening, so we don't have a clue?
I think we still would.
Well, we still do, and we have every time.
What is that?
We have, uh.
Cause I'm looking at it, too.
We have, and, and the bids are anonymous, but it's really obvious when a, a contract is awarded, because that becomes, that becomes public.
Right, but as far as us choosing, that part, I mean, we could just go off, but, I don't know, the mayor actually would be choosing.
I, I don't understand your question, Louis. I'm sorry, I wasn't following very well.
I think what he's saying is, I think what he's saying is that we would open the bids anonymously and choose, and if one happened to be Mr. Hodges, if there was no conflict, it would be fine.
Oh, yes, absolutely, you could do that. Well, you, now, you can't do that, because you have to look, so, um, you, as the, uh, council, want to look at the qualifications of, which.
Of the company.
Of the company, which you can't do very well if it's anonymous. Does that make sense?
It's almost like the professional services stuff we do with the engineering firms and the professionals.
Yes, so if, if Jim says, I, I wanna, Jim, if Jim Adams says, I wanna pick up your garbage, I need to know that he, his company is qualified to, to pick up the city's garbage, and I can't do that without knowing what, who his company is.
We gave contractors some, to them thinking they would be okay.
Sure, but it, that wasn't an uneducated, um, decision. You know, the city did as much research into that company as, you know, as, as possible, and, you know, met with the representatives of that company, so.
Are, did you, are you looking under section six?
What is that?
Of general provisions on the RFP?
That penalties, remedies.
It's, uh, paragraph B, penalties, remedies, and default.
Yes.
This provides that, um, in the event of default, it's actually ninety days total, so the, the contract, so we could notify that they're in default, um, and that it will be terminated within sixty days unless the, unless the contractor cures within thirty days. So, it is just sixty days.
Okay, yeah.
That's where we got that number.
Yeah.
All right, so, so. So, they bought a chipper, and not a mulcher. And that's, that's, that's their business decision, if that's what they decided to buy as opposed to a, a vacuum. They've, obviously, have priced out vacuums, and that's part of the plan, but I don't know. I think the main thing is, is, is JP and them, are they gonna bid again, and can they bid again? Do we have options?
Sounds like they can, if they want to.
Yeah, that's what I said, they can.
I mean, and I'm throwing this after Steve, not to throw you in a mix here. I know you're in that business. You guys aren't here to, to look at bidding, are you, or, or?
Too old.
Too old. All right. I'm ju, I'm just trying to make sure to see.
And now, I'm just, I get so many clients that I don't know what's going on, so, a lot of the people probably.
Sure, well, thank you.
I had someone call me yesterday that is in that business, just asking me, you know, saying he was putting it out, and it wasn't being picked up, and he was like, do I need to buy a leafback? I don't know what I need to do here, you know? Um, cause his, his customers are complaining that it's not being picked up. Um, so, I don't know if he would, he might put in a bid, because he asked me about, you know, buying the equipment, you know, I, I don't know. If we put it out for a rebid, we may get more businesses.
I think we try it. I think, I think we try.
Okay, well, let's circle back around. Let's go ahead and get through all this other business, and then talk about that at the end with the termination, please.
So, it sounds like the answer is no, we're not gonna pay that bitch anything, no.
Okay.
Drive?
I mean, I think some of them would have to make a motion, and if nobody makes a.
I make a motion if we deny the.
Well, I think you have to make a motion that we pay it, and if no one makes a motion, then it, it's just.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's like.
Either or.
Yeah, I mean, I guess you can, but.
Will you feel better if there's a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we need to.
Okay, so may I make it?
I make a motion, we do not pay invoice number fifty-five from our leaf and limb contract of fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
You said that you, to not pay it?
Tom, do not, do not pay. Capital N-O-T.
N-O-T. Okay, Ms. Vicki, when you're ready?
JP Hodges?
Obstain.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Mayor here.
Ooh.
Yep.
Yes, cause I can't vote no.
You could.
You could, and it would.
Then it'll just be dead in the water.
Which.
Yes. Motion carried. Okay, the ordinance for yard waste. Do we wanna make changes to this?
I feel like we can't do anything on it yet.
You wanna.
It almost, it needs to be tabled.
Tabled again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Until we figure out what we're doing with wins and leaves.
No problem.
Yeah, because you could, you could essentially put that on the new person that's doing the contract, to just make sure you get everything. Unless it's a tree, a big tree job, you know?
Okay, we'll table that and move on to new business. Ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-three dash two, private club for the Tap House. Um, the ABC sent it back, and they did not like the name of the Tap House, so they're changing it to the Cartwright Lodge. Can I get a reader?
I'll read.
All right.
I'm in. All right, I don't have a hard copy, so.
Oh.
Should be fun.
Do you want this one?
Yes, that'd be awesome. Thank you. All right. Is this the same ordinance number, or does it get a new ordinance?
Uh, it'll probably get a new number.
It will get a new number. It will be twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three.
Thank you.
All right. Ordinance number twenty-twenty-three dash zero-three. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-eight twenty-three zero-two, the Tap House Inc. to Cartwright Lodge approving the per, private permit application for Cartwright Lodge and allowing for the application of the required permits from the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division for Arkansas Code annotated three-dash-nine-dash-two-two-two as amended. Whereas the Cartwright Lodge has applied for a private club membership as required under chapter four dot two-four dot oh-five of Heber Springs City Code number eighteen dash oh-four and Arkansas Code annotated three-dash-nine-dash-two-two-two, and whereas the application is limited specific to the Cartwright Lodge and whereas the Cartwright Lodge has provided all the information required for the permit application process, and whereas the city council for the city of Heber Springs hereby approves the application for the permit for the proposed location to operate a private club within the city limits of Heber Springs, and whereas the, the approval does not authorize the operation of a private club within the city of Heber Springs, but does function as an authorize, authorization to apply for a private club member, permit through the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division per Arkansas Code annotated three-dash-nine-dash-two-two-two. Now, therefore, be ordained by the city council of Heber Springs, Arkansas, section one, that the application for the private club permit is hereby approved for and specific to the Cartwright Lodge located at two-oh-one East Main Street, Heber Springs, Arkansas, seven-two-five-four-three. Section two, that no private club operation shall begin unless and until the permit to operate a private club is issued by the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Association Division. Section three, and the approval and permit are subject to suspension or revocation by the city in the event Cartwright Lodge violates Heber Springs City Code or state law.
Thank you, sir.
I'm moving place on second reading by title only.
Second.
Is that just to speed it up? I mean, is it because of emergency, or?
There's no emergency.
You mean to place it on a second ti, reading by title only? Yes, because it's supposed to be read three times.
And it's allowed by law to only do title. And you can, you can actually do title only first reading.
Do you want me to read it again?
No, we gotta vote first. Ms. Vicki?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Ready?
Ready.
Arc, okay. City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash zero-three. An ordinance amending ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash zero-two, the Tap House Inc. to Cartwright Lodge approving the private permit application for Cartwright Lodge and allowing for the application of the required permits from the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division for Arkansas Code annotated three-dash-nine-dash-two-two-two as amended.
Move we place on third and final reading by title only?
I'll second that.
Ms. Vicki?
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I'm moving, we adopt the ordinance. Oh, wait, you gotta read.
Go read it one more time.
City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash zero-three. An ordinance amending ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash zero-two, the Tap House Inc. to Cartwright Lodge approving the private permit application for Cartwright Lodge and allowing for the application of the required permits from the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division for Arkansas Code annotated three-dash-nine-dash-two-two-two as amended. We may wanna fix the spelling of Arkansas in the title. Arkisnas?
I think that's fine. I'm moving, we adopt that ordinance.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki?
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried. Uh, next up, we've got an ordinance for a private club for Verona's Italian Restaurant. Jim's warmed up and ready to go.
Ready? Short ones.
This'll be number four.
Yes, two-zero-two-three dash zero-four. All right. Ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash zero-four. An ordinance approving the private permit application for Verona Italian Restaurant in Heber Springs and allowing for the application of the required permits from the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division for Arkansas Code annotated three-dash-nine-dash-two-two-two as amended. Whereas Verona Italian Restaurant has applied for a private club permit as required under chapter four dash two-four dash oh-five of the Heber Springs City Code number eighteen dash oh-four and Arkansas Code annotated three-dash-nine-dash-two-two-two, and whereas the application limited, limited and specific to a Verona Italian Restaurant, and whereas Verona Italian Restaurant has provided all the information required in the permit application process, and whereas the city council for the city of Heber Springs hereby approves the application for the permit for the proposed location to operate a private club within the city limits of Heber Springs, and whereas this approval does not authorize the operation of a private club within the city of Heber, Heber Springs, but does function as an authorization to apply for a private club permit through the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division per Arkansas, Arkansas Code annotated three-dash-nine-dash-two-two-two. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of Heber Springs, Arkansas, section one, that the application for the private club permit is hereby approved for and specific to a Verona Italian Restaurant located at one-thousand, or twelve-two-twenty, South Seventh Street, Heber Springs, Arkansas, seven-two-five-four-three. Section two, that no private club operation shall begin unless and until the permit to operate a private club is issued by the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division. That, section three, that the approval and permit are subject to suspension or revocation by the city in the event a Verona Italian Restaurant violates Heber Springs City Code or state law.
Thank you, Jim.
I'm moving, we place on second reading by title only.
Second.
Yes, second.
Vicki?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried.
City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash zero-four. An ordinance approving the private plug, private permit application for Verona Italian Restaurant of Heber Springs, allowing for the application of the required permits from the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division for Arkansas annotated, Arkansas Code annotated three-dash-nine-dash-two-two-two as amended.
I'm moving, place it on third reading, third and final reading by title only.
Second.
Vicki?
Louis Short?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
City of Heber Springs, Arkansas, ordinance number two-zero-two-three dash zero-four. An ordinance approving the private permit application for Verona Italian Restaurant in Heber Springs and allowing for the application of the required permits from the Arkansas Alcoholic Beverage Control Division for Arkansas Code annotated three-dash-nine-dash-two-two-two as amended.
I'm moving, we accept the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion?
No judgment.
Ms. Vicki?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, next, um, appointment of AMP members. First, I need a motion to appoint Ms. Ally Sugg to the AMP Commission.
So moved. Second.
We don't have a.
That's what I'm saying.
That'll be four.
That would just be four.
Can the mayor not vote on that?
It'd still be four.
Oh, sorry, I can't count.
Oh.
One, two, three, four, casey be five.
Gotcha. I can't count either.
Okay.
I only know, cause we already did it.
Did somebody make a motion?
Uh, yes, I did.
Oh, thanks, Louis. And a second.
Anybody else can take this position if they want to? John Pat, you and him?
I've asked everyone.
I gotta get more practice.
Ms. Vicki?
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Obstain.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to appoint Mr. Lane Tubbs to the AMP Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
You're not spelt right, does that mean I don't?
No, I was gonna, I was wondering about that.
I know, cause it'll be spelled correctly in the minutes, don't worry. We'll fix it.
Okay, Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Obstain.
Louis Short?
Yes.
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to appoint Ms. Ashley Cordell to the AMP Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Vicki?
JP Hodges?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, I need a motion to appoint Scott Jones to the AMP Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Vicki?
Y'all are fast. Uh, JP Hodges?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, um, I need a motion to appoint Councilmember Jim Lay to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, I was gonna ask this.
He does, no.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Who seconded that?
I do.
Ms. Vicki?
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Aren't we supposed to have two on there?
Motion carried.
For City Council? No?
I think just one for P and Z.
I thought it was Chris and Tom. It was me.
Rebecca, and then Chris. And then I think Jim had it last year as well.
Paul before at the same time. Just one though?
I thought there was always two.
I think it's just one.
Doug is confirming.
Yeah?
Doug says yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug.
What are we doing about the water commission?
Uh, they say that they have a name in mind. I'm, I've pressed them at the last meeting.
Don't they need like two though?
They need, they may need a second one.
Okay. Do we have like a city council seat on that one?
We should.
We should.
We don't. I mean, I go. I'm not technically part of the commission.
No. You don't get a vote. I just didn't know if that should be something that...
I don't know that anyone would be available. They meet like the third Thursday at like 9:00 a.m. Anybody available for that?
Somebody would have to, if we have to. Somebody needs to be on that.
Okay, well, I'll talk to them about it. I think it needs more people.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because there's only like two on there.
It definitely needs somebody from the council.
That's not really a commission. It has been like that for like a year, I think. That there's just two of them?
For a while, yeah.
So I would say by next meeting, we need to put somebody on there.
Now, but...
Is somebody volunteering? No, I didn't know whoever they had in my... He's not here. He's not here, that's who we put on there.
So, the AMP thing, for a city council to be on there is by ordinance, right? For a city council member to be on the AMP.
Yes.
We need to do the same thing if the...
For water?
Yeah, we would do it by ordinance.
And then...
But I think that makes sense though.
That does make sense.
I mean, that we have...
We all agree with us.
The other thing, yeah. I mean, when it comes to...
I'll look into it.
And the AMP and E and Z, so...
And if it ends up that we've got two, we should do two.
Yep.
Okay, next, the invoice for Jackson Brown and Pokulik for the bank building.
How many of these we gonna have?
Well, this is the third one.
Yeah, I thought... I think I asked in October. I said, did we already pay one of these?
Yes.
So, so this is the third one?
Yes.
It's like, so are we up to like $21,000? Paying the architect?
I'm not the math person.
Like, were they all free?
I think so.
Seven thousand?
Just because we keep going back and changing what we're asking them to do.
Yeah, well, we've hired them, you know, to do that service, so...
Okay, I mean, I think we have to.
Yeah, well, the ARPA money is not appropriated yet for this specific project. That's why we have to keep... I have to keep bringing it to council.
Are we getting close to the final design?
Uh, they just sent me another one. I emailed it to you guys, I think, to, yesterday?
So are we gonna get another bill?
Yeah, I'm sure.
I don't mind paying for, you know, continuing to pay for it if that's for getting to the right thing, but as long as we're headway.
Yeah.
Still all over the place with it.
Everybody should have gotten it in their email yesterday or today.
So the stuff that you sent out to us with the three different options. This is the one that we've sent to them, told them that's what we wanted.
I asked them which one of the two would be more cost effective. And he said it was option E, but he gave two plans for that and then one plan for that option, that first one. With a price.
I guess I don't understand. The last time we talked about this, we all said that.
It was that one or the other one?
No, it was that.
Okay, well, he gave a new number on both.
So instead of just working on the first option, he did two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so is that cost more because he did it on two of them instead of just the one?
Sure.
I have no idea.
You build for time.
Yeah. Okay, but all of us didn't, right, did all of us agree on option one?
About so.
Last time? Okay, so I would just say moving forward, so we're not getting... So we're kind of done and we're like, okay, this is it, stick to this and then...
Option one with the changes we...
Yeah, making it to four and then getting rid of the...
Second floor.
The second floor and I think there was a change in overall...
The length of the base.
Length of it. Hey, Ryan, does that overall length of base, is that, are we losing anything by not having that?
No, we still have the actual base basically, so that was just that extra additional area that was moved.
No, 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 the width or the length to get it in, what, didn't you cut it down like six feet or something like that?
Cut down, uh...
Like twenty.
Twenty?
Maybe just six feet or less. It's still, it's still a good width for our trucks to carry now, so... That eighty wasn't just built to double, that could be taken and we'll have it option out, but we can still place them elsewhere after we're ready.
So they've got a base off of that.
Yes, with that change.
And that'll fit the new truck, all that.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm still just...
I'll make a motion and we'll pay the invoice.
Thank you.
Second.
Any more discussion? Uh, Ms. Vicki?
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
J.P. Hodges?
Yes.
Motion carried. Um, we have an invoice for Sudden Link. And I'm waiting on a callback. Did you talk to municipally about that? From municipally, seeing if we have any insurance to help cover this.
So what is this for? There's damage at Fox Run?
Yes, um, the guys were going to replace a culvert and the fiber line was underneath, like in the kink of the culvert. So when they dug it up, they dug up the fiber line.
So there was a culvert?
Wow. After we talk about this, I have another, I have a question about... Where, where the lawsuit that, that the multiple counties, that cities filed against...
Yeah, against Sudden Link.
Against Sudden Link or whatever.
Yeah, I've talked to the AG's office on that one. I haven't heard anything else about it.
So it wasn't technically under the culvert?
Like in the culvert.
It wasn't under the culvert.
Yeah, between the two ribs. Or should, when you're doing a straight replacement, you should be able to take that culvert and put it back in. The lines that they just put in, which they also added to, those are five foot away from what we're hitting the road with.
So did they... So do they have to get permission from us where they put these lines or how, can they just put lines wherever?
Where they want, I guess. Because they're not helping, violating.
So what happens if we just don't pay?
I don't know.
They'll sue us.
Collection agency?
Yeah. And then we go on a franchise fee.
And that's what Phoenix is, is their collection agency?
No.
State law.
Well, kind of, it's a loss prevention.
Loss control, yeah.
Yeah, it's not like we've been turned over for collections.
I mean, it, I mean, it basically, basically says in there, pay it unless you want to argue about it.
So, are there other options?
I think we table it till we decide if we can...
Well, it says it. It's supposed to be paid within 15 days, but like I said, I'm still waiting to hear back from municipally.
It's a big chunk of money and we did ask for more information because...
Yes, I've emailed with this lady back and forth.
Even her information was just telling me more about replacing the splice, it's not...
Well, what she said initially, they, our question was, it was repaired at the time, so why wasn't the repair good enough? And she responded that, um, that... That a temporary, it was just a splice is a temporary repair and, um, it, it wasn't going to suffice for a long-term solution, so they had to replace. Like 1,500 yards or something? A thousand twenty-six feet. Yeah.
What happened? I missed it. They're replacing a culvert at Fox Run there by a little... Okay.
And they want us to pay $32,000.
For their fiber line and replacement of their own.
Was the one digging in cut.
I mean, I think we should, we should get the answers we need before we... Then, we know your communication.
I'm not aware of any insurance that we have that would, would cover, uh, that kind of loss. We can engage in negotiations with them about settling it, um, but...
What are your thoughts on negotiating with that? That just, I don't know. Seems to me like that's absurd a little bit in terms of a price, but I don't know.
I agree.
Fiber optics is expensive.
It is expensive and, and I, I mean, I was shocked at the number myself. I didn't know that before Scott said that tonight, that it was actually between the ribs of the culvert. I didn't understand that. But we do have an obligation to call before we dig, um, but I can understand why that wasn't in the thought process when it was between the ribs and the, of the culvert. I, I do understand.
And I normally am always calling everything, especially if present.
Did we...
Certainly, yeah, I, I wanted to, yes.
Did we like take pictures and stuff of that when we did that or...
There are photographs.
There's pictures.
Do we have any left to stand on about not having to do it?
I, I would assume that there's some room to negotiate on it, but I could be way...
That's what I, I think there might be some room to negotiate and, and we can talk with them about that. We've reached out to municipal league just to see if there's any, any type of, if any of the insurance that we have, if, if there's coverage for this sort of thing. My inclination is that there is not, but we're still waiting to hear back from municipal league.
I'd say we just tell her that we're working on it and we ask for another month to... If it's a general citizen, they pollinate on your house and everything else, so we have to call before we do. And if we don't, we make a mistake, then residentially it's on us.
Right, and, and that's, that's their position as far as...
And this goes back to like October of last year, is that right? September?
Yeah.
And this is the first we're hearing about it.
First I've heard about a bill.
Well, it sounds like they spliced it, then they probably came back. That's right. Two, you know, two months later, then put 1,600 feet in.
You're just not getting this information as well?
No, it came, well, in January.
Into January, it's like February, not...
From September, and we just now found out about it?
Yeah, that they're gonna bill us for it.
And they told two other fiber company companies, and they said a splice is a normal fix. They said, if you were to hit a line number and they had to replace it, like they'd be broke. And one was fiber tech, they do the whole east coast.
So a fiber should have been, or the splice should have been sufficient?
Yes, yes, they said, they do that all the time. If they had to replace lines, they would be out of business.
Yeah, so it sounds like we shouldn't be paying for 1,600 feet.
They actually ran another line with it and upgraded all the boxes. And I had talked to Howard Jeff, who lives there, and when he talked to them, they said they were gonna be upgrading that anyway. So they would have had to bore anyways to put the new line in, because the new line's twice as big as the old.
Sounds to me like...
I have pictures of that also, because I've seen it from the washout. It actually washed their line out, so you can actually see when they put it in brown.
From last week.
Sounds to me like we, in some sense, will be liable, you know, it was a mistake, I get that, but it's not like there's...
I said, I'd be willing to repair, go do the splice, and actually the companies I talked to, they said, you might even have to go from the box to where the actual cup was to put some slack in the line.
Sure.
And that's not even 20 yards, from the box to where we cut it.
Well, my thinking is that our, and I don't know the whole story, but our, we go over negotiation is why did they not consult us before they replaced? I mean, did they just have carte blanche of how much they want to replace with that? You know what I mean? Then just send you a bill after.
Yeah, how do they determine 1,026 feet?
I don't think they have any obligation to consult us before they make repairs to, or replacements to their line, but, um, before they adjudicated that part to us.
So, you want me to table it until we can negotiate?
Yeah. And we're calling our, one call from now on, right?
You know it.
We're calling one call for everything, right?
Oh, if I put a shovel in front of it, I'm calling.
Okay.
I mean, all it does is it's a, it's a four-day wait.
Yeah, I know, I had to do it.
Till it clears.
Yeah.
Okay, next, we have an ordinance for the termination of the contract with Gris Ferry Total Property Maintenance. We've only got extra. Would someone like to read this?
Rebecca?
Want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Want me to do it?
Sure.
This'll be '04?
I have an extra.
'05? '05?
Everybody made fun of me because I used to print all this stuff out.
Hey, I still print it out.
Me too.
I like mine on paper, too.
Was this '04, '05? Five, right? Five. Ordinance number 23-05. An ordinance authorizing direct termination of agreement to the City of Heber Springs and Gris Ferry Total Property Maintenance LLC declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the City Council of Heber Springs, Arkansas recognizes obligation to provide for the collection and disposal of yard waste and tree trimmings at a reasonable cost to the city. Whereas the City Council of Heber Springs, Arkansas acknowledges as limited resources with which provide, with which to provide said services. Whereas the city entered into agreement dated November 17, 2022 with Gris Ferry Total Property Maintenance LLC, thereby referred to as Contractor, an Arkansas limited liability company in good standing, where the intent of the agreement was to establish relationship whereby the city would provide payment to the contractor, which in turn would collect and dispose of the city's yard waste and tree trimmings. Whereas section one, paragraph C of the aforementioned agreement, allow both parties of unrestricted right determination to terminate the agreement upon 120 days' notice to either party. Is that where we're discussing 60?
We had said...
And so...
Sixty?
This, well, no, it's a different paragraph and I don't have the whole contract in front of me in order to make the modifications if you want to base it on default rather than termination without cost.
What's your advice? Here, does it matter?
Well, it could matter because if they, absolutely, because if you, you know, if you, if you terminate, uh, in 60 days, then that lessens your, your liability for an additional two months payment. Now, my inclination is that they will walk away, that they want to be done. They don't want to keep throwing good money after bad in their mind. But I, I think it matters here, so, um... But we're, we're gonna redo it though, so it gives them an opportunity to get... Let me see, would you put that contract back up? Oh, yeah.
But if we do it under a termination because they failed to do so, then I, I would think that if Mr. Hodges had been decided to bid, that, that they're gonna feel a little more like targeted and...
I think, I think no matter what, if you bid on this contract and get it, if someone doesn't get their lease picked up fairly quickly, they're gonna... You know what I mean? I feel like it's kind of one of those positions where unfortunately you probably just can't win.
No, this is the RFP, this is not the, um, the contract.
Can't win for some, you know what I mean? Like a not all. Can't win for some, you know what I mean? Like a not all.
I can kind of remember. I just don't want to make it up before I modify this ordinance.
Do you know what it would be called? It was the contract?
You just had that.
No, I showed you the RFP.
Oh, okay.
That was the RFP that I showed you.
I don't remember the same language from the contract.
Rebecca, can I continue to read it and then circle back or no? Or do you want to wait? Do you want to table it until next month, or do we have special...
Well, I don't think we want to do that either.
I don't think so either.
I, I think that if you want to base it on default, that we probably need to have a special meeting, and I know that nobody likes...
I understand.
...special meetings, but...
We gotta do it right. It's gotta be done right.
I do want, I mean, I do need an opportunity to look at it. I thought that... But I don't have the contract in front of me to be able to make reference to a specific provision.
Do we want to just do a, pose a question, everybody? Kind of, we want to do the get this right for them, for us, and for everybody. Do we want to just make the extra 30 minutes or an hour to have the appropriate meeting for this and move on?
I'm fine.
It's just a matter of me amending this, amending this ordinance to reflect the council's will more precisely.
And we don't want to put you on the spot. I mean, we're kind of putting you on the spot. I'm gonna stop reading it then.
Okay.
And let's table it.
I got it. I got it right here.
Well, but even so...
Give me just one minute. Let me see if I can... Ally, I don't know how to use your...
It's just a, it's a...
You can touch it. You can touchscreen it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so would JP have to abstain?
Oh, yeah.
He should.
Yeah, I will.
Now, with whatever the timeframe is, whatever day count is, if they refuse within that timeframe to even do something, what happens then?
Hold on, she's thinking.
Louis, can you say that again? Sorry, can you say that again?
So if this has an emergency clause, so this from 120 days or 60 or whatever the timeframe is, within that timeframe, if they say, forget y'all, we're not doing another thing, we can't afford to, good luck. Do we... I mean...
Immediately go for an RFP? Immediately post it. For a lot of the city, apparently, it sounds like it'd be no change in service for another few weeks.
Yeah.
But they don't, they don't get paid, you know, I mean, they're...
I think, I think if they paid, they were paid for the month, the services need to be rendered through the end of that time period.
Absolutely.
Now, whether they do it or not would be up to us following a legal pursuit of, like, settle like any...
So if we're, if we're firing, then why would we want to give them the opportunity to come back in? Anybody has the right to bid.
Anybody has a right to bid. You just, you just wouldn't, when we look at the proposal, like Rebecca mentioned, we, you know, you take their qualifications into account and...
I'd like, I'd like to have
Yes, I agree.
A few minutes to revise this, because we, we have to give them notice of default, and then they have 30 days to cure. And so what I think that we should do in this instance is reach out to them and see if we can agree to an immediate termination.
I, I think you're right.
And...
No sense of rushing it. Let's do it right the proper way.
Yes, let's do it right, but, but we still have to give them, we have to give them notice of termination. And then they have an opportunity to, to cure. And so the ordinance that I prepared was based on the 120 days unrestricted right to, to terminate for, without cause. So, let's, let's table this for now, and then we'll schedule a special meeting to, to address this. You can...
Well, cause we're all assuming that they're gonna immediately walk away and do it, but they may not, and that's fine too if they improve their services, so...
We can enter, I think what we can do now is entertain a motion to give notice to the contractor pursuant to the terms, notice of termination pursuant to the terms of the contract, and that will give Mayor the authority to, to issue the notice that we're, and then they can respond with whether they're going to be cured, whether they're going to cure. So what, what we would entertain is a motion to give notice of default pursuant to the terms of the contract.
I want to make a motion to enter into a notice of default pursuant to the contract dated November 17, 2022.
That's right.
Second.
Any discussion?
With that, if they agree that we terminate the contract, then we'll send out another RFP.
Right, but those are hypotheticals, Lane, that we need to address after we give notice of default, because they have an opportunity to cure.
Making sure that, I cannot imagine if they would not want to.
But, but we have to assume the contract stays valid and that they improve their service and move forward unless they've otherwise stated their intent.
So we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Ms. Vicki?
JP Hodges?
Abstain.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Now, I want to make sure I'm correct on this. I think I am.
Motion carried.
For any future RFP, Q, whatever, whatever we want, so we don't by law have to choose the lowest bid.
It's the lowest responsible bidder. That's what the law says.
So, if we say they have to have certain equipment, but then this one says, one says they have the equipment, one says they don't, you know, it...
It has to be a value to the taxpayer, that, the best value to the taxpayer.
I'm not worried about value, I'm worried about the law.
Yeah.
It's the lowest responsible bidder, and it is, responsible is in the discretion of the council.
Because I know many years ago, the Water Department got sued because they didn't choose the lowest bidder. It was determined, learned at that time that that wasn't required, but that's what appears to go, so...
Okay, so, and also does that mean that if we pick that, that that is it, or we can enter into negotiation with them?
You always have the, well, if they get a bid, we accept it. You always have an opportunity to negotiate.
Or we can, we can approve or deny. We can deny all bids.
Absolutely. Yes, we, we have specifically reserved the right in our RFPs to deny all bids. We can scratch it and go back to the city picking it up, which causes its own host of issues, but we have the right to do that.
Doesn't matter. We gotta see what their response is.
We, I mean, I think we're putting cart before the horse, and we need to give notice of the termination, which the council has authorized the mayor to do and, and see what happens next.
Okay. Open mic. Anybody want to address the council? Announcements?
I think I have a question. I forgot. Not about my life insurance. I just held that up. What's the deal with the basketball goal in the community center?
Okay, can we finish our meeting?
Oh, it's not, this, this is not part of the meeting? I can't ask a question?
We're at open mic.
Oh.
Well, I was gonna do announcements. It's broken. They're working on getting it fixed, but in the meantime, they're working with the school to get the games taken care of.
Gotcha.
Okay, any announcements? I know softball, baseball sign-ups are coming. Just in a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.